I'd like to call the joint special meeting hearing.
That's right.
For the food truck ordinance tour. Do we have any public comment? I hear shoes.
I guess I have a question. Is there a planning or anybody looking forward? I mean, I'm not opposed to food trucks, but I would hate to, well, again, we're talking village. I would hate to see the village lined with ten food trucks. I don't think that that would project what I would think the town or the village would want.
I think one of the biggest problems is where would they all park? Since there's parking is so limited in the village now. You put start putting food trucks, too many food trucks in here. That's gonna cut down parking even more.
I mean, I can understand there's a need for it because as our restaurants are closing, there's more and more need for this, but I just don't know if we're looking to the future in ten years, which I won't be here in ten years. I'm pushing the daisies.
You never know.
But I'm thinking that, you know, is that what they really wanna look at in the future? Is a lot of food trucks in town?
I think that's the issue is that there are so many places closing and it's because food trucks are so capable of coming in and taking that business that why would anyone open a brick and mortar in an area?
True, why would they come?
Yeah, they're just chattering back and forth and that's, you know, I'm not dealing with that.
What before?
May I have your name?
My name is Tina Mowry.
Tina?
Tina, T E N A.
Oh, E N A.
M O W R E Y.
And this gentleman, your name please?
J D Larosile, L A R O S I L I E R E.
L A R O.
S I L I E R E.
And is J D, is that J period, D period?
Yes, like Jack Daniels.
Okay.
Jack Daniel records, get it right.
They said there's no S on it.
Any other comments from the public?
Well, I can understand the town wanting to limit the number of trucks and possibly where they can park. But, you know, for us, I work for Sandry, we have the Sunoco in town. We're finding that there is a need for the food truck. That, you know, workers, people, local people, to go to the mountain and purchase food is a little expensive. The food truck can provide them with quick service at a pretty reasonable price. Again, I feel that the recommendations for the ordinance is a little harsh. To expect only special events that food trucks can come in, that's what I take from this is that the town would like to see just temporary food trucks, not anything that's there on a regular basis. And honestly, for a business to succeed, they have to be consistent. And so if a food truck's, you know, here for a day, there for a day.
Are you guys super early?
It's tough to find them.
Of course.
Also, again, that consistency of being in the same place every day, all the time with the same food promotes a successful business in town.
Thank you.
I would say to that point that a food truck is a food truck and not a business that's stable in one spot because it is a food truck. And so the point of it being on those is to move on. It's meant to be more of like a transient sort of a thing. And that's why when we were kind of formulating an ordinance, it was that it comes and it goes and it can come and it can go. But to place itself steadily for over a hundred and fifty days is outrageous. That is a brick and mortar and it's a brick and mortar without having to pay a lot of the things that brick and mortar does.
Jared, Jared, perhaps there can be a ratio of food trucks to brick and mortar restaurants. So if we reach a capacity of the number of food trucks in relationship to the number of open restaurants, we have to stop at a certain point. I know that there's distances that are being talked about, but combine that with zoning regulations that might keep the distances too far apart. So if you have the distance to like two hundred feet or something, you may be able to fit in more of what the public might want. But also to a point, you don't wanna oversaturate the food truck market and create a problem for those brick and mortars. So perhaps there might be a happy medium somewhere.
Thank you.
I think we've been working on that.
Thank you.
This is a public meeting. We're taking input, no decisions will be made tonight. But we are entertaining what this ordinance looks like. The last one was updated in two thousand and eight. Obviously, a lot has changed in the world since two thousand and eight. So a harder look at that ordinance is what has been requested. Ms. Carter.
I'm totally confused. I thought that we put off the public hearing because of Chris Callahan's changes.
I was not abreast of that situation.
Okay, I'm fine with it, having a public hearing.
It was my understanding that the public hearing went through and was scheduled and it was going to be discussed with Chris Callahan.
I'm sorry that we're late then because I thought it was ready to move now.
I thought it was at five thirty today. We're all a little jumbled here.
Did you get an agenda? Mine's six.
I got an agenda from Mr. McNamara.
I don't have this at all. My apologies, I didn't get it.
Oh, it's okay. So this is the first round of public meetings tonight. So if Mrs. Carter would like to step up and go over the outline for folks, we're happy to do that. Otherwise, I don't have much to add to this as far as tonight goes.
Sure, I just gotta find my paper works.
I have the this food truck ordinance, which I believe is the most current edition.
The one that Chris, the one that Chris changed.
This is the one that you sent out.
Yes, I believe it's been edited by an unknown party in June.
Yeah.
Okay, so mostly what, I think that can be picked up from here, right? Mostly what changed in here was making sure that the responsibilities of who enforces it is made clear that it's the town manager. And most of that was cleared up by, that was the biggest change throughout this document made by Chris Callahan, our town's lawyer. We did have some feedback from the public. Someone came in and drew a map of the village and said that two hundred feet, and we had settled on three hundred feet at the end of that last meeting that we talked about it, the two hundred feet would basically exclude every place in the village except for the Sunoco station ironically because it's two hundred and five feet from your door to the food truck. And so I think that was one of the sticking points we were gonna talk about tonight, the two hundred feet thing.
And just so everybody knows, that is section E, part two, under other standards.
And something else that I did is I did make an application, a permit application form.
Yes, I saw that right here, right? Great. Two page. The goal of this ordinance is to address and update, an outdated ordinance with the changing of, you know, kind of the culture towards food trucks, especially since two thousand and eight. It behooves us and protects us as a town to make sure that there's some sort of permits or regulations in place. However, me as a citizen, I find it to be of a net benefit to have the ability to have food trucks in this town. And I personally would enjoy them. So that's my two cents on why we're meeting here tonight.
Have you?
Excuse me, can you wait until your?
The chair will recognize you if you raise your.
Go ahead.
Again, do the residents of Ludlow not want these food trucks? I mean, do we have a petition going? Do we have anything that's, you know, shows the majority of the people in this town do not want this?
I haven't seen a petition.
So I would just like, we're not trying to exclude food trucks. We're trying to protect our brick and mortars and give them a little protection because they're operating under different guidelines.
Interesting.
We're not trying to exclude food trucks at all. That's not a, yes sir.
You mentioned guidelines that the brick and mortar are operating on. What guidelines are being conflicted with the food truck?
Well, they have to go through planning, they have to go through zoning. Their businesses have to meet pretty stringent specifications.
Parking requirements, wastewater requirements.
And they are paying taxes and utilities and stuff, which.
Different types of insurances.
So we're just trying, we're just, we want the food trucks. We don't disagree with that. We're just trying to protect our brick and mortars to have to go through all this extra work and not pay a hundred dollar fee for six months.
But the food trucks do have to pay for insurance. They do have to pay for proper upkeep. They do have to pay rent in some lots that they are in along with the permitting process.
Understood, that's not a requirement by us as a town. So in order to do business through the town, we would have to ensure that safety and double check those.
I just saw her hand up.
JD.
For example, the food truck that's currently at my location had.
At you, Sandry?
At Sandry.
Yeah.
It went through the permit process that was in existence.
Correct.
Went through, obtained all this insurance, went through the vigorous safety, food and safety requirements of the state, pays rent for both its physical location, where it sits on my property, and as well as for utilities. Now, what other standards could they possibly meet that are not being met?
Because I had the, you came into the DRB and you got a permit for your building and that wasn't included in the parking at all. So when we allotted parking in any kind of condition we might have made, has never come back to the board to weigh in on that. Because part of your permit was a fence that was put up for a certain person to ensure safety. And there's the question whether or not that's happening right now or not. And the parking issue on my side is we don't have any control on how many people, how many spaces you're taking up by putting that food truck there and what you're allotted. And you might be way over.
Right, again, we complied with whatever the requirements were at the time and followed the procedure as delegated by the village.
And really, the food truck takes up, you know, the space that it's in is lawn. Again, we tried to be responsible as far as how close it was to the fence, how close it was to other businesses. Again, I understand the town needs some regulation, but I do feel that these regulations are a little overboard. You know, it's, I understand that a food truck is mobile, that it can move, it can go from place to place, but for us, we have four food trucks that stay in various stations throughout our company. They don't move and there's no requirement for them to move or only be there for a certain number of days. It's a business in the towns that they're in. They are permitted correctly through their towns. And again, it's just, it's fair business competition for any town to have a food truck with good food. Or, you know, obviously, if it has bad food, then they're not gonna be there very long. Same with a brick and mortar. If they serve good product at a reasonable price, they will remain there for a very long time. If they don't, then there may be some issues where they lose business. I mean, I think it's just a fair competition in any town.
Lady on the.
Charlotte.
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 Hi, thank you. So I'm Charlotte Gally, I'm on South Hill Road. I absolutely love food trucks. I have eaten at many, many, many delicious food trucks and wanna support them. But they have wheels, they can move around and they should. They should come and go, keep it active. That's one of the fun things about them. But we also have some dead times in our town when it's hard to get a meal. Your choices are very, very limited on Sundays, Mondays, and Tuesdays. How about if we encourage them on those days and not so much on Friday afternoon or whatever is popular? I don't know, I cook a lot. And of course, for special occasions. Also, a food truck park is an outstanding idea. And that could, well, actually, I've got lots of thoughts on where that could be too. That's another conversation. And I would also like to offer my help in working on the application form because that's one of my favorite things. I know that a lot of people have worked really hard on this already so far and it's been exciting to be a part of some new stuff in Ludlow and I appreciate the time to talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gally.
I just wanna mention, yeah, you didn't do anything wrong. Permit at the time, you filed the permit and you got your permit, but afterwards, we took a look at it through the zoning lens and saw that, you know, you're permitted for a gas station, you're not permitted for a restaurant or a food truck. And so that's actually against your permit. But you didn't do anything wrong because we didn't have anybody take a look at that when you applied for your food truck permit. So now that is gonna be taken a look at. The zoning, you're gonna have to march this down, the application form down to the zoning administrator. They're gonna pull your file, they're gonna look at your permit to see what you're permitted for. But you're actually in violation of your permit. But like I said, you didn't do anything wrong because that didn't exist at the time.
You said the permit never said we couldn't.
Yeah, exactly.
We could not do that.
But that's a problem because with your permit, you know, fire safety's looked at, parking's looked at, safety of the neighborhood, all that's looked at and it's not looked at with a food truck. And so, you know, next time your permit will have to be pulled and you'll have to see if you're actually allowed with your parking and all your safety, your fire safety, the police weighed in, everything weighed at your permit. Oops, I guess I'm done.
You got the whole.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just for a thought, I don't know what the actual regulations are, but I'm thinking like if you had a spot like Sam's, which I know is gonna be a FIBA buyout, but being a food truck, could we put food trucks in a space like that because they can come and go?
Absolutely, possibility.
And this is why you wouldn't have to worry about the two hundred feet because there's more than enough space down there.
Yeah, and I wanna be clear, these are the proposed ordinance.
Okay.
Anything can change on this document during these discussions. So we can discuss, bring ideas, formulate a plan. I'm sure you guys are in compliance in every other place that you have food trucks and I'm sure those ordinance were updated much more recently than two thousand and eight. So I don't want this to turn into a match and try to single you guys out for your food truck or your situation. This is a general overview of the entire town. You guys just happen to be on the receiving end because you happen to have a very popular and delicious food truck over there and it's raised some eyebrows. So we have to do our due diligence, we have to protect our people and our citizens and we have to do what's right for our community. And I believe food trucks play a big role in that, but we have to try to understand in this community what that looks like moving forward, what the implications are.
I understand. Again, if we had a brick and mortar business that was, you know, very inventive and bringing in some new things and a few people in town were not happy about that, would we go after the brick and mortar? Because they are changing the way the town did business, which, again, we didn't change anything. We followed the rules a hundred percent. And I feel at this point, you gave us our permits to do our building. You gave us, you gave the food truck people their permits. We should be grandfathered in. I also feel that, you know, if the town wants to have these rules and regulations, they should also think about a seasonal type restriction. Do you bring in a food truck for the winter? Do you bring in a food truck for the summer? Do you bring them in for the spring? Obviously, people do not want to come into town and only be able to do business on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Because we know the town of Ludlow is busy on Friday afternoon. And I think that the town needs to consider what's fair. Again, we don't limit a brick and mortar to only being there on day Tuesday and Wednesday.
Thank you. Would anybody else here share something?
I, as a brick and mortar in town, would say that if another brick and mortar, which has happened, comes in and are a competition in any way, that there's nothing to be said or done. They've been zoned in, they have a property and that's obviously been okayed. But when a truck can come, and I've actually had conversations specifically with yourself and agreed that it was, it was wrong. And I think everyone that comes to me can also say the same. So it does seem to be a little bit of a battle when it comes to a truck that's pulling in next to a brick and mortar with the same thing. I don't know if the ordinance is gonna do the three hundred feet or not, but it is a matter of like looking out for, I don't, I also love food trucks and think that that's something that's an amazing thing to bring in when it's appropriate, when it's, it's not just right now for special events. Right now, it's saying that it can come in for two consecutive days at any point. That means a Friday or a Saturday if that's the case. So it just seems like there has to be some kind of stipulation where there's not a truck pulling right next to another restaurant and saying, well, you know.
But there's many restaurants next to each other in town.
Yes, and we, and we as a town work together. But, and we, and we support the town in employing children, the kids that live here, the locals, we take care of those people. That food truck doesn't appear to be doing that at all.
It does, it does because it pays us rent, we pay our taxes, we donate to many of the community events.
So do every single one that's walked in my door.
Sure. And so again, we're all in the same boat. I mean, I'd love to be the only gas station in town.
You are.
The Shell station will reopen. You know, again, I feel, I understand, but I just feel, you know, I have three competitors, kind of four, you know, since the Apple Store has changed hands again, you know. But I am not opposed to any of those businesses continuing to do what they do. It's fair competition. You know, I'm very happy for the Shell station that they're redoing their business and they're gonna be real competition to us. But again, I'm not here to say, please, don't give them a permit for this. I don't want them to be able to do things that they've always done.
Thank you.
If I could add one more point.
Go ahead.
Had this food truck served American fare, hamburgers, hot dogs, I don't think anyone would have any serious objection to it. Had it served Polish kielbasa and, you know, whatever other ethnic fare, again, no one would raise an eyebrow about it. The issue here is this is a food truck that serves primarily Central American, South American, and Mexican cuisine, which does have, which does put it in somewhat of a competition with an existing brick and mortar facility in town. Now, fair market economics would tell you that's exactly what it should do. It should be able to compete fairly with any existing facility here and let the consumer make that decision as to which one they want to frequent. The prices, the quality of food and so forth and so on will dictate how business is done. That's been the American way, that's always been the American. So I don't see anything wrong with our food truck being in direct competition with existing brick and mortar. However, in reviewing this ordinance, it would seem to be a punitive effort to control that, to say, well, wait a minute. You're doing too much business, you're doing too well, you're interfering with a pre-existing Ludlow brick and mortar store. You're a direct competition. We're going to control you, we're going to limit you, we're going to put a, basically a fine on you. You're calling for a three thousand dollar a month fee on this one existing truck. How does that, is that consistent with fairness? Is that consistent with free market enterprise? I don't think so.
Thank you, JD. I want to be very clear and then we'll get to Mr. Alden's question. This is not an apple to apple comparison. We're not comparing apples to apples, they're very, very different. A food truck is an entirely different operational model than a brick and mortar and they're treated as such. So I don't want the, I don't want the conversation to revolve around, is it fair? Is it not fair? We are going, we're tasked with updating the food truck ordinance based on some input from the town. So we wanna craft one that's as fair as possible and as understandable and simple as possible. But we're not simply just going to not address the issue because the food truck ordinance is from so long ago that we owe it, we have to do due diligence to do that.
And I absolutely agree. You're right, it needs to be.
And I don't wanna be strenuous on really anybody and I, I.
But.
We have to make it as fair and as legible as possible and as understanding as possible without trying to overdo it or underdo it or any of that. That's what this public forum is for. So I appreciate everybody's input, but just really wanna stick to, this is the ordinance and it's not really interrelated with too many other things other than the task at hand here. Mr. Alden?
Hey, thank you. Sorry for coming in late, I didn't realize this was happening earlier because I saw it on the trustees' talk. And also, a question on that matter. Is this, is this also being discussed at the trustees' meeting in conjunction with this public hearing?
This is a public hearing for the vendor food truck ordinance.
Okay, it was on the, it was on the agenda, I'm sorry. So some of this may have been covered because I'm coming in late, but maybe just a couple of quick comments and you can tell me if you've already covered that. Under section C, the application review, number four, "Character of the area will not be adversely affected." That sentence is very subjective. So it's concerning that a sentence like that would be so open, you know, the character of the area will not be, that, you know, that's really subjective. So I would think about that. And scrolling down, not sure if you've had any conversation about the three hundred or two hundred foot, but I think we've seen that at the two hundred foot that there would be no spot anywhere in what most folks consider the village for a food truck under this ordinance. Sure, you could probably put it at Sam's, but if the burger place next door reopened and it was three hundred feet, I don't think you'd be able to. It would be, it would fall into that three hundred foot. So I think that would be out, but, and that's probably a little too far out of town also. And the last piece I had, under general conditions, A, B, C, D, offensive practices, noise, odors, lighting deemed offensive by the managers. Food truck operator engaged in misleading, fraudulent, or offensive business practices. Again, I don't know if he's talking that, but that's really ambiguous and overstepping. I mean, a lot of folks could have an opinion. You know, veil charging thirty-five dollars for a cheeseburger is an offensive business practice in my mind. So there's a little too much, it's too ambiguous on that to, you know, to have something that's a offensive, you know, it's, I'd hate for that to be. have something that's a offensive, you know, it's, I'd hate for that to be applied in, in a sense that, that, you know, it's not the true intent. And that's all I had on it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alden, subsalian points. Mrs. Carter, I believe you put D, offensive practices in there specifically for no, no, noise, odors, and light, lighting. So you don't want big spotlights into somebody's bedroom window, you don't want offensive odors like the, what was that pepper company a couple years ago in California, they couldn't breathe?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Sriracha. Yeah, Sriracha. So I, I actually do understand that, I think it's a little wordy.
Actually, did you see that Chris Callahan's note at the end?
Yes, I did.
Is this really necessary? He said, is this really necessary?
I think probably not, but I do like the noise, odors, and lighting.
Yeah, that part.
I think that's, I'm remiss about the 300 feet myself, I don't know how you guys feel. But this is an open public meeting, so we should keep hearing from the community, I suppose.
My feeling is if we put a distance on it, nobody's gonna be in town, let's just say there's no food trucks, and not go through this, we're not trying to do that. We think there is a place for food trucks. So, that's my feeling on the distance. I mean, we have restaurants all up and down the street, and there's the 200 feet, like you said, the only place we have is where there is one right now that's 200 feet, it's just barely. And so, so if we do that, let's just, if that's what we're gonna say, we might as well just say no food trucks in the village. And I don't think that's what we're, we're striving to do. Go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Alden, you raised a couple good points, and I appreciate that. Section C, application review, part four, the character of the area will not be adversely affected, is by and large very similar to the topic we just discussed a couple minutes ago. I can't find now. But the, where is it? Section D, offensive practices, it's pretty similar, I would say.
Yeah, and Chris Callahan didn't have a problem with C, but D, he did say, is this really necessary?
Is there any other public comments on this topic tonight?
I understand the town wants to limit what goes on, you know, as far as business, and we want to be fair. I do think the town could limit the number of food trucks that can be here seasonally. But again, we don't limit brick and mortar for their seasonality, they can be here year-round. So I would like the town to consider, you know, seasonal food trucks, also consider possibility of a number of, you know, whatever that number may be, maybe it's three, maybe it's 10, food trucks that can be here in town on a regular basis, consistently. Because again, to be a successful business, you need to be consistently in the same place.
Thank you for your input, I appreciate that. Any other general comments, questions?
I remember going to be that if we're, if we're taking out the 200 feet, that it would be that it is still made clear that trucks are a transient business, and that we would hold firm on it being incoming and outgoing, and that, that we definitely stick to the two consecutive days.
In the other towns that we have food trucks, that is not a consideration. They can, as long as they re-up their permits when they're due, they are allowed to stay as a business in the same spot.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I would like to move on to our other reading. I think we've had some good input. And I can work on that, but here's the hearing.
We should set our next public hearing.
Yes.
Ms. Carter, thank you for providing the truck permit application, that's great.
And it's a 15-day warning for the next one?
Yep, we should do our second public hearing before we close this hearing.
I guess it depends on when we want to do it. Would have to be, I guess it would have to be, but towards the end of July or beginning of August.
We just do it in our next meeting, or right around our next meeting?
Which would be August 4th.
Could we maybe do?
No, excuse me, excuse me, August 5th.
Could we maybe do 5:30 this time? Give us a good amount of time to cover it?
5:30 on August?
August 4th.
5th.
August 5th, thank you. Daily and a dollar for it, huh? Like, make a motion to close the first public meeting for the vendor food ordinance?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to follow a regular Village Board of Trustees meeting to order, first order of business, pleasurable allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Any changes or additions or removals from the agenda? Just if we can, the table will return to 13:25.
Yep.
Try to get that done in August. It's, it's, it's a bit of a moving target right now, and it's, it's not pressing issues, it's just minor groups that we're having some internal discussions about, so we can move there, it's not a problem. All right, a few minutes from previous meeting.
I think that both of the.
I have a couple corrections on, on June 6th. I'm sorry, June 3rd. Sorry, can't see it. If we just turned the page, I'm sorry, I haven't made it numbered. You always have it numbered. The third page, the third page. No, it just says, third page under I.
That's June 6th?
June 3rd.
June 3rd. Let me find it.
Because we're just in hijack.
Hold on.
Okay, it's okay.
So it's item number?
I.
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 And it just.
X. Under nine.
Nine, nine I, okay, I got it.
Justin Hijack. It just says, one for short-term rentals and another for short-term rentals.
Oh.
And it should be long-term rentals, that would just matter, because it's kind of makes sense.
Good catch.
And the last one I have on that is on the next page, very simple, just under D, it just says, I'm sorry, E, Terry Carr says it is a type, it just should be type O. I think that's all, that's all about that one.
Okay.
The other one, I had this one little thing, I said something a little.
This one somehow got numbered.
16, too.
That's why I'm doing it right now. No, that one's not bad, that one's just one little tiny.
All right, so it's long-term rental.
Long-term rental.
All right, so it's IV.
Number, I'm sorry, number three on.
God, where is?
You're so good at number pages. It's just.
Okay, I got it.
Derek Coy said that, and it's just a they, they have to file, that's it.
Why?
Everything else is perfect, just that, should be they.
Okay.
Thank you. Make a motion, make certain this is corrected?
Check it.
Third and June 6th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from citizens? Well, what's the topics we're going to, I don't know what to comment on your app.
You can comment during the agenda, I don't know if you have the agenda, or you can tell us what it is, and you can say now, if you'd like.
I just wanted to know what you're doing with the long-term rentals.
Long-term rentals.
It's on the agenda here.
Yeah, it's, it's section eight, Mr. Alden.
Okay, so then we.
Three things to look.
It'll be quite a.
It's on the agenda.
Oh.
Comments, I'll go.
Yeah, we'll save it for the discussion, I guess.
Okay, allocation and review and possibly approve. So just as you have presented, 109 Pleasant Street, they have an allocation for a family home, two units with two bedrooms in the main house and one in the second unit, they'd like to combine the units and add a two-bedroom allocation request to make it a five-bedroom
I don't see that there's any issue with that, do you, Mr. McNamara?
I do not.
And I would make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor? 119 Main Street Homestyle Hostel looking to increase from four, a seat from 49 to 72 seats, an additional 1,035 gallons per day.
I'd like to accuse myself of this vote.
I just had one question before I make a motion, like, because the change in like the parking and everything, by approving this, we're not approving the parking that is safe, we're just approving just the sewer. So if it didn't go through with the parking, that one, okay, I'd make a motion and we approve it.
I would second that. All in favor? Department head reports.
I don't have any other department heads this morning. This is obviously thicker than normal.
Because it just happened, I saw that too.
Battle of the stable to get in there.
Age receivable reports. So you do, you have the reports, obviously a book, because everything just went out. Following back up on the last meeting, we do have, we're working with Joe, the water, wastewater department, just to firm, because we do have some, we're sending out this connection notices, which will be going out, we're just firming up the timeframe that those will be ready, as well as from a wastewater standpoint, properties that may require a need to be put on the property for the balance of the balance. I do want to just, you may have noticed, or may have heard, we have a small billing staff with the wastewater, where because of how the meetings felt when we approved the rates, the bills went out, and we did not make the appropriate adjustment to the wastewater bill. So that increase was not included in, I think it was a 3% increase, was not included. So we sent out supplemental bills. It's only, you know, the supplemental bill really amounts to $4.95, something to that effect. We put a notice in with them, but obviously, when you apply that across the system, you're talking, you know, $10,000, which, so, again, it's, it's an issue that we had on, in our office, and have a system that looks, the way the meetings felt, I apologize for it, but it's been, it's been handled, so, you, if you're on the wastewater specifically, you may get another thing. Looks like, the way the bill looks is that you're being charged double, but it's not, it just carries the bill over.
You're saying that billing error cost a few thousand dollars?
The bill, if we, I'm saying that if we had said we were not going to send a supplemental bill, it would have been a $10,000 loss.
How much was the mailing?
For that, because they went out with the bills, come on, boss.
Do we have an email option that we can sign up for?
So that's, that's the interesting thing.
Any questions?
Review updated proposal and register. Has been the ongoing topic for the both the village and the town, so I would defer to the board and to Terry for any discussion regarding where we stand now, again, keeping in mind that we had a very good public meeting, I thought, with a joint meeting. This would, the way I see this moving forward, because this is a town and village registry, that's the way it's laid out, is this board will make it, you know, talk about it tonight, select board's gonna talk about it Monday, probably have to have another joint public meeting on that, in order to move anything forward. So again, that's just, the logistics on how I see it playing out. But again, I'll defer to the board and to Mrs. Carter first.
I do have a little bit of an update. I contacted, I forget his name now, Michael, he's the head of the fire safety for the state of Vermont, to ask the question about spot checks, you know, the spot, and I did make a, I looked up the Vermont's definition of spot inspections, and I do have that added, as you, as you wanted it added. And he said that, well, first I did my own research, and it said basically, fire personnel can go in anytime without any notice if it's an emergency situation, and one of the emergency situations they described online was inoperable smoke alarms or carbon dioxide detectors. So that doesn't seem like an emergency to me, but now I see how it is. So anyway, I contacted him like, two weeks ago, right after our meeting, our joint meeting, and he just got back to me this morning and apologized for taking so long to get back to me, but he said that it's normally 48 hours, so I think we should add that, except in the case of a emergency situation, which he also reiterated, I think I, did I forward that to you, Justin? I also, he also reiterated that it would be, you know, defective smoke alarms, defective carbon monoxide detectors, obviously a fire, you know, anything like that would warrant no notice, but normally would give 48-hour notice if you don't suspect, you know, that's in an emergency situation.
So please, all the smoke detectors, CO2, are would be wired, are wired in, so they know about them, or?
I think normally one's wired in, one's on batteries, isn't that true, right? It's on that fighter safety checklist thing, I think included in here. At the Julian, her daycare, I know, she had to have one wired in and one on batteries for her daycare. Also, this updated one reflects Chris Callahan's changes, because you asked me to vet it through him again. He was gone on vacation, but he did make changes, and I did send you the changes that he made. All the margins and everything were screwed up, but I hopefully fixed them. So on this part, that where it says the spot inspection, I will add with a 48-hour notice for fire, from fire personnel, unless it's an emergency situation, and describe, copy and paste exactly what it said online, as an emergency situation. So that is the change that I'll make before the, for the joint meeting.
Added the trash, the noise?
Yeah, I added the trash and the noise.
Self-certified for two years.
Excuse me, Justin, your comments, are they just to yourself?
Sorry, I'm just.
No, I didn't know he wanted. I do that all the time.
No, you don't have to do that, I know. Sorry, making it all out there. And here's the town and village short-term property registration, with a second page on the back, all that's great to me. And this is if it has more, it adds confirmation of septic inspection report with the Vermont department.
I also would suggest, like, I had, um, my good friend here, Jared, took this PDF offline and turned it into a document, I think they should have to fill that out and file it.
This?
Yeah, and file it.
This is about, this is just the one from the life safety folks.
Right.
Correctly.
I think they should fill that out.
Yeah, we haven't modified that one.
No modification for the Ludlow. Yes, this should be a required document as well. So these two documents in tandem.
Yeah.
And then if you're larger, you get this additional one as well.
And this educational piece, too.
Yep, and the educational piece, um, which is very important.
Which is something Chris Callahan said in the beginning, he said, you know, you have to show people where they go to get that educational stuff, so.
What are we looking for tonight, Mr. Alden?
Um, I mean, I don't think there, there is going to be a, you know, there's supposed to be discussion on the short term and the long term. I think there needs to be a consensus that the board is ready to go to a public hearing under the, the select board.
It's not a motion.
Could you make a, oh, sorry. Could you make a consensus here for a public hearing, and then if the select board did, we could move?
That's, that's what we're gonna do.
We can move forward, okay.
So it's not a motion, it's just consensus?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Because it is a thirty-day warning. I did find an error in here, too, as.
I see right in the.
Eric's on there again.
Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, uh, I'm just working off of, um, the document that was included in the agenda, so I don't know if, if there's a different version or not. Just as a side note, I know this is a working document, but there are a lot of typos in this, so we may wanna just go through it pretty, uh, finally, as it, as it goes along. Just a couple of comments, and some of them are, are the same as I've made several times. Just quickly, is section two purpose, um, resident's right to quiet enjoyment, uh, you're using that term, uh, inappropriately here, it's not, it's not applied, um, to this, but it's not that big of a deal. Going down, section four, letter C, three, property owners and if applicable, the tenant's name, uh, the question I would ask is why would you ever need the tenant's name? Uh, what does that do for you and, and why would you need that? Why would that be included there?
Wait, where's that?
Page two.
Page two at bottom, part three.
Number three.
Section four, yeah, C three.
I just said if, if, if applicable, if applicable.
Yes, my question is why, why would it ever be applicable? Why would you need a tenant's name, uh, you know, for in a short-term rental situation? Going down, scroll through what I have quickly, and you guys can, um, you know, decide if you want to comment on them. Uh, under C six, uh, the education material, um, going through the middle there, it says precautions that operators must take into consideration prior. That's, that language is confusing, and that is actually comes from the statute, but it's saying operators must take into consideration. So when I think of taking some consideration, that means like, maybe I, I can do it and maybe I don't have to do it. So that, that language seems to be a little confusing to me anyways, and if someone wanted to explain that and educate me, I mean, that would be great, but if, it doesn't seem like the safety requirements through the state are something that can be taken into consideration, those requirements, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm just reading out and understanding that, that sentence incorrectly.
I think we should change that, I agree.
The only thing.
Because now we're asking him to fill it out.
I'm reading it as they must take into consideration all of the health and safety precautions from that self-certification form.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's how I read it, Mr. Alden.
Okay, yeah, it was, I read it several times, and I went to the statute, and that is the language in the statute, and it, and it didn't quite, uh, register with me, so thank you.
I, I could be mistaken, that's, that's how I read it, and perhaps Mr. Callahan or Terry will have clarifying language, but it's nice to go off the state, too, so.
Under, uh, same section four, scrolling down, section, uh, uh, letter F, number four, the, the short-term rental registration expiration, um, I'd like to understand, um, the definition of the renewal process. Is it a full new package of documents required every year, or is it just paying the renewal fee? Some items like insurance, you probably have to resubmit every year, uh, but it's not clear, uh, what the, what the renewal process is under, under letter F. Under H, it sounds like we sort of get to the bottom of the spot inspection piece of it, uh, makes sense, obviously, if it's an emergency. The way I was reading before, Ms. Gardner clarified, it was, you know, that spot inspections could happen, and, uh, you know, unless a resident or owner invites somebody in, then, then that would be a, you know, a violation. But as I said previously, a resident could always call the fire department town or state for an inspection anytime that they feel something is not, uh, you know, is not safe in the unit. Section five, under fees, again, instead of previously, I think that fee of six hundred dollars is excessive and punitive, and I'd like to understand at some point, if, if we have a thousand or eleven hundred short-term rentals and they all register, that's six or seven hundred thousand dollars coming into the town, and it sounds like the management of this program is fifty or sixty thousand dollars? You know, what, where is, I don't know, six fifty or six hundred thousand, what is that allocated for? Is it just general funds? You know, I think there needs to be some transparency on, on, on what those funds are and why, you know, defend six hundred dollars, like, why is it six hundred dollars? You know, I'm not sure we've had a lot of discussion about that, so that, that would be helpful. And that's all I have for the short term, I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alden.
Yeah, I just want to address the six hundred dollars, because originally it was five hundred dollars, Justin, because you were saying the average night stay, which I think is like seven fifty, but Suzanne pointed out that that includes, like, the Southview ones that are like thousands of dollars a night or something, that gets averaged in, but the six hundred dollar figure came from Ryan, he estimated how much it would be for a position in the town and, and the fire position, and to get the fire personnel to get their MOUs from the state, all the training that they had to have, and that's why it says the select board may adjust the fee, it's just a starting off place, so the select board can modify the fee if they find that the town is, uh, all of a sudden so rich that they want to change the fees.
Most of those short-term rental software companies recommend doing a permit fee based on the aggregated total of a night's stay, um, which is where we got those numbers. Uh, Mr. Alden, I don't disagree with you, I think that there should be some language as to where the money's going, obviously, operationally, this needs to cover, uh, and then all the excess, those are good ideas for public meetings. You know, I would have some ideas such as infrastructure, um, but that, that's, I think, what public meetings are gonna be for.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Justin, I appreciate that, it's, I don't think there's been any conversation, and it, it's, it's a good chunk of money, you know, that's six or seven hundred thousand dollars coming in every year, um, so that's why I just, it seemed like the fee was excessive and, and then, you know, the narrative that it should be based on one night, um, no other permit fee is based on, on what any business in town charges, you know, uh, a certain spot with a, with a nice fireplace that charges, you know, twice as much for their fancy drinks, doesn't pay twice as much for their, for their permit, then, you know, again, it's just giving the Coors Light beer. So there should be some discussion to, you know, really sort of justify what, what that number is. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Alden.
I did find an error in the application, which I'll fix on the last page, it was supposed to say more than eight bed spaces, and it just says, I left out the eight, basically.
There's a couple typos, uh, like Mr. Alden was saying, a couple of small things, but I think the general form of this document is, um, changed quite significantly, trimmed down, um, more concise, and I think overall, uh, a, 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 a more streamlined presentation, so thank you for, um, doing that.
Mr. Hill?
Good evening, everybody. I was just gonna kind of follow up on that one comment, um, under the short-term rentals, so again, um, going back to fee structure, you know, six hundred dollars does seem excessive, and I guess I'd also want, you know, more of an understanding of where those dollars are being put into town. You know, I think it should also be considered, you know, depending on size of unit or rental possibility, different fee structures. You know, I know that one of the comments was based on a nightly rate, but, you know, obviously, the nightly rate for a one-bedroom rental versus a, you know, ten-room, you know, bedroom rental is gonna be vastly different. And, you know, going around the state, looking at other towns in Vermont, you know, Stowe probably being one of the second most largest rental, um, towns in the state, you know, they have a short-term rental fee of a hundred dollars per year, for a year, so just kind of wondering and getting some transparency on that, and then, yeah, maybe that's for a later meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Woodstock and London Dairy have five hundred dollars for unhosted.
I'm not gonna go into hosted or unhosted, but I think everybody should be treated equally, whether or not they're getting a thousand dollars a night or a hundred dollars a night. I think whatever the registry is, everybody should be charged the same amount, I think equality across the board is imperative. My other little tidbit of two cents is, um, possibly the rental registration should expire on June thirtieth to coincide with the fiscal year of.
Right, it should, it should say June thirtieth.
So that we don't have that one day overlap that may cause a problem in your town.
But can I comment on that? I really think we should have a discount for hosted, because those people contribute to our community, they live here, you know, over half the year, to get, to be homesteaders, you have to live here a hundred and eighty-five, it's a hundred and eighty-six days a year, I think it is, those people contribute to the community, obviously, it's pretty hard to own a house in Ludlow unless you're, you know, a very wealthy person, so I really think those people should get a discount. And also, the homesteaders proves that they don't make so much money a year that, you know, they obviously qualify for the homesteaders declaration because they, they're not rolling in the dough.
That's, that's my biggest concern, is you have, have an older person that rents out during full age season, so they can pay their taxes and make ends meet.
I really like, uh, you know, the state of Vermont changed a bunch of zoning regulations. When I was out in Utah, every house is lived in, and there's an ADU on every property, and they're going to have to subsidize their living expenses. That's great. I like that.
Anything else on the short term?
Oh, yeah, I did want to comment, I, I just got a housing study from, um, the Regional Planning Commission, and it's specifically on Ludlow, and their recommendations on the housing study was to come up with a short-term rental registry for Ludlow, that was their biggest recommendation at the end of this housing study. And some tidbits from the housing study that I got was the average price of a home in Ludlow in two thousand eighteen was four hundred and thirty thousand, and the average price of a home in two thousand twenty-three is eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, so the average price, median price of a home in Ludlow right now is close to a million dollars. And they also suggested in that housing report, I sent it to Justin today, because we were commenting, I was commenting on it to him, they also suggest that you have places in town that you don't allow short-term rentals, and it's called, um, what is it called? Middle, you're, you're leaving out the middle of the, um, of the people in your town that can't afford homes, like, not even affordable, but middle-class people can't afford homes, and so they, their suggestion is to designate an area where you don't allow any more short-term rentals, and so hopefully, people that could, you know, afford to buy a home in that area, they wouldn't turn into a short-term rental, it would be people that would be coming here to stay and be part of our community, that was their suggestion, and I had never brought it up to this board before, so I just thought I would tonight, just throw it out there.
Thank you for that information, and thank you for emailing that study.
All right, let's move on to long-term rentals.
I'm not sure why we need a long-term rental registry at all. I'm a landlord, I have many apartments here that I write, control, own, or run, my family, and I just think it's, the town trying to regulate this, if there's no other town, I don't have this South Burlington that's doing this, so why should we do it? Why do we need it? I think the regulation is, you regulating my business is, is just uncalled for. I mean, and then, I guess, I haven't seen any of the things, it's the first time I've kind of like catching up with what's going on, it's not like all the landlords in town or the big apartment owners got a letter sent from the, from the town saying, there's meetings coming up, you should, you should attend. I mean, if you go there, if you, if, if something happens in the zoning, and somebody's building something next to my house, the zoning people send me a don't notice, saying there's a meeting coming up, why didn't you come in? If you haven't even want to say anything about what's happening next door to you. I think that should, same thing should happen with landlords in our town, you know, the bigger landlords. But, uh, I mean, is there some sort of form that needs to be filled out in your registry, your long-term registry thing?
We haven't passed anything about it yet, I think it's been passed about it, we're just talking about it.
Yeah, well, let me, let me, let me pass this on when you're talking about it. Lawyers have client privilege with their clients, doctors have client privilege with their patients, and I, as a landlord, have client privilege with my tenants, I think that should not be default to you, because it's, it's just not regulated, it shouldn't be not regulated, and it's not my right to give that information to you, and it shouldn't be your right to ask for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alden. The reason why the long-term rental is here is because the select board felt really strongly about providing safety for our citizens in all rentals. Originally, this was a uni document, a short-term and long-term rental, we've since stripped it to a long-term and short-term rental, separate, um, once they go before a public meeting, if they make it that far, each one will be, um, spoken about at those public meetings, which I hope you're aware of if these move out of, um, this area tonight into the public meeting forum. But I appreciate your points.
I think it's kind of important that, I feel like on my part on the board, that we did not agree to the long-term rentals, ever. I don't remember it being brought up the way it was, and I made a public statement last month, I didn't think that that was appropriate. We had another landlord come in here, voicing his concerns, Bruce Dryhouse, who has a lot of long-term rentals, and it was, it was discussed, so it was kind of a shock for him also, he wasn't aware of it, so I just want you to know, I, it, that might be the selectmen's, I didn't hear their vote, but on our side, I didn't feel that way, on the trustee.
I want to mention, too, the planning commission, it wasn't something that we wanted, we voted against doing that, but when it got to the select board, Noah particularly has had some rentals in town where he's had some issues, and that he's worried about the safety of long-term rentals because of that, he had a fire at one place, had a flood at another, and he's someone that's been very adamant about that, but I took a look at the South Burlington, it's the only other town in Vermont that has, um, a sort of an all rental sort of thing, and I went through the whole website, and the only thing they regulate is short-term rentals, all the rules are about short-term rentals, they just make the long-term rentals, once a year, say, I have a long-term rental, this is my address, basically, that's it. So even their registry does not have all these hoops to jump, hoops to jump in.
I think that Mr. Ellis's point, uh, regarding, um, client tenant privilege or whatever he was mentioning, he's referring to. he's referring to section D, number three, the property owner's end of applicable tenant's name, address, phone number, and email should be divulged on the form. I have to agree that I think that should be strictly if this ever does come to fruition as a long term rental registry.
Thank you, Mr. Jett.
Got another question. Yes, Mr. Alden.
Yeah, thank you. Just just to just a comment. The chair of the planning commission just stated that the planning commission voted against the long term rental registry. I don't believe that's correct. There was there was discussion about it. The chair was adamantly against it and others were on the fence and it was tabled. But to say that the planning commission voted to not do a long term rental registry, I think is is not correct. My comments on this, and pardon me to the, you know, to the gentleman there is nothing in this ordinance, if you will, is restricting anything. So there's no restrictions happening here. And that's been sort of a catchphrase used by members of the planning commission. And, you know, the state doesn't allow you to restrict rentals. There's nothing in this document that's restricting rentals in any sense. It's coming from a form of safety. And again, you've heard me say this, I'll argue all day long that long term rentals are more unsafe in Ludlow, in the surrounding towns than than most short term rentals are. Because they haven't been inspected and because, you know, they're older buildings. And, you know, oftentimes the the owners don't understand or know the requirements that are needed. You heard from one of your select board members recently that he's lived in three apartments that he left smoke detectors. So that's really the concern here. And there seems to be a narrative also that folks that are renting short term rentals are running a business, which they are. Folks that rent long term are running a business. You know, that's my business. I have long term rentals in Ludlow and that's a business. As a business owner, I always expect that I'm going to have to pay some sort of permitting fee for my business. I don't think there's any business in town that is allowed to run without some sort of documentation or permitting. Running long term rentals is a business. Nothing in this document or this registry restricts long term rentals. It doesn't restrict short term rentals. Nothing in this document would suddenly create or take away long term rentals. I think you're simply asking for them to be registered and to follow the same rules and regulations that are required by the state. And I think that's fair. I don't know why folks would have a concern that their units are safe. That's just a couple of things on this piece here. Section four rental registration, letter C, I think there's some language missing there. It just says the dwelling must post a copy of D. And there's there's nothing else behind it, so I think there's missing some language. And another question or concern, not a concern, but just just wondering why there's no why is there no enforcement or penalty language for long term rentals? Why have an ordinance with no way to enforce it? If you want folks to sign up, and even if it's free, you know, we're doing this in the name of safety. We want our long term residents to be just as safe as the short term residents. Why is there no enforcement or penalties listed in a long term rental piece of it? Again, if we're looking at it as a business in in the safety sense, what what is the thinking behind having an ordinance with no way to enforce it? Thank you.
I just had a question. Eric, maybe you can answer it. In the minutes you wrote that you stated that the planning commission is against the long term rental ordinance. He referred to the short term rental document. It was, it's in our minutes of the June 16th meeting. Did you not see that?
I think it's well documented. I mean, the chair can speak for herself.
No, I just hear the planning commission itself. I'm just asking you. It just says that on there.
What is the question? I'm sorry.
On the minutes from June 16th, you said, Eric Alden said the planning commission against the long term rental ordinance. You cited it in your
Yeah, yeah. Well, the the chair of the planning commission can obviously
No, that wasn't the statement, though.
The the chair has made a statement that the planning commission voted against it, but it's it's that didn't happen. It's the chair that's against it mostly.
No.
The other folks are
Four out of five were against it. Four out of five of us did not want it to go forward.
Ms. Carter, may I ask you a question?
Yeah.
In terms of the penalties or enforcement leg of the long term, it was included in the last iteration of it and it was scrubbed. I I don't know, all of it may not have been intentionally scrubbed, but we were discussing the fine for advertising as not being really pertinent to that.
Yeah, you want, I I kind of got the message you wanted all that scrubbed, but maybe I got the message wrong.
It would seem to me that, you know, a violation such as a defective smoke detector or something would require a remedy in X amount of time, and that might already be a law. I think it might already be on the books. So if we receive a complaint
I'll add it back in.
It would be some sort of fee at that point if it wasn't corrected.
Okay, so add back in those fire safety penalties?
That is the that's, I guess, the whole reason I without without any enforcement or penalties, we we don't have a strong document.
Okay, I'll add those back in.
I, you know, Mr. Mr. Ellison has something to add.
Yeah, I was just, Eric's holding to recomment about he's used to some sort of ordinance fee. He's used to paying that. Why aren't we paying that here? Every apartment that I have, every unit, I'm paying quite a bit taxes on. And it's Brendan just said the water and sewer bills, and the sewer bill is going up again. I mean, it seems like every six months the water and sewer bill is going up. So I feel like I'm already paying my fare for for providing affordable renting in this community.
Yes, and I don't think there's an appetite on either board, I can speak for myself as a select board member, to have a sort of fee associated with this. That wasn't part of the discussion.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Ellison, if he has to meet state regulations for safety for sprinklers and for smoke detectors, don't don't you do those tests at least annually?
Yeah, the other thing too is insurance companies. They inspect my properties every year, make sure they're up to code.
I have to agree with Mr. Ellison, even with us in a small, small long term rental. They inspect our house. They've had us add siding. They come in, they make sure that we have inspections. We do the EMP inspections for the lead. We're allowed, we're made to do that every year. That's always been there, long before this. And and he is right. They come in there a lot. The insurance company comes up and checks. They take pictures of your house.
I'm not well versed on the tenant laws or short term rental laws for that matter. I rely on other folks, but I've always maintained that, aren't they already regulated?
Yeah.
They're very regulated if people read it. I think that's why we're finding there's only one other town in the whole state of Vermont that's even considering this. I just think it's because it didn't need to happen. I think that complaints that people have about landlords, there's outlets already out there. We're adding all this because somebody doesn't think they have a complaint. You know, Mr. Ellison, and I know people have a lot more rights than we do. And when he does section eight, they come in and tell you how many exits you can have, all the fire safety. They made us take outdoors. So it's very regulated. It's not like it's been willy nilly for 40 years. It's very much, and you know, from thanks.
You're looking for a general consensus on this board. These are two separate documents. So Chair, I would ask, do you want to move forward on the short term rental both? Or should we have an independent consensus on each ordinance proposal?
I think we should do each separate because they're totally different. So how do you, how's everyone feel about the short term?
I think the short term is, I would feel comfortable going towards a public meeting with this.
Feel it's long overdue. I'm definitely for.
So you have a consensus on the short term.
So 30 days from today?
Baba, you also saying you, great.
But it has to be 30 days from the select board too.
It has to be 30 days from
From the select board if they decide to.
By, I mean, by the by the letter of it, I guess the trustees could pass something without, on the select board, you know.
Of course.
It'd be kind of
They did that in Woodstock.
Sense to of course.
Yeah, I do too.
Because you're gonna want to do it also once if the merger happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to think in terms of the merger.
Yeah, I I think the short term rental is ready to go to a public meeting. And I can only speak for myself. I think, you know, we put the long term on the public meeting too, proposes to people.
I'll add back in the penalties that apply to fire safety.
That's
Stay in the states.
Anyway.
So I just, I'm just saying that from the transition, you know, the ease of making this both, I think it's wise for both boards to at least put both ordinances on a public hearing. Again, that doesn't mean that it's it's approved, because what's gonna happen is you're going to have a public hearing, at least another one with the two boards. At that point, there can be a consensus made with the boards, you know, you have an idea of what's going. But then it's going to go back to your other boards and saying, all right, let's vote it. And it's very possible that this board could vote the short term rental in and vote the long term down. And the select board could do both the opposite. I don't know. That's why I don't vote. But I think it's in, you know, you've heard enough and a lot of time has gone into these where, you know, moving them to a public hearing does nothing but what we just did for the food truck. We just talk about it and we have more of a pub. So it's not, you know, and it could So I just think out of, you know, the honor of the work that Terry's put in and just for both sides of the community, because we do hear people that are in favor of both, I think in the ease of transparency, you put them both to a public hearing and then vote it from there.
I agree with that.
I think that's the best way to go. Because again, a public hearing doesn't doesn't approve anything. It's just an additional step as a joint board.
Just moves it down the road.
Yeah, I mean, then you have to have it anyway.
Yeah, you have to have it.
But it is moving it forward another step. Because if you don't, and you don't have a public hearing for the I advise the select board to do the same thing. If you don't have a public hearing for, say, the long term, and someone comes up and says, hey, this isn't right, and, you know, and then questions it. Then we're back. We set ourselves back a whole other, another month.
It can be the same night, but they have to be two separate public hearings, the doc, the document.
They do.
Yeah.
Just one question before you go. Because I've been kind of public about it. If I don't agree with the long term rental, the way it was presented here, because I feel like we've, I've been here for like years on this thing, for real. And I feel like this has just been a couple of means for me, the long term rental. So as I don't feel comfortable with that part, I know what you're saying, that I can still vote to put it to the public.
Yeah, so just in, all we're doing is that is a consensus saying, yeah, let's have a public hearing. But then after that public hearing, then it's gonna come to the board for a vote, possibly.
But if I feel like we haven't, as a town, done due diligence by this
Say no.
Say no, but would right now would be behoove me to say this to put in front of the town? Because I feel like we haven't done enough.
That's your
In my opinion, but I feel that way. I feel like Mr. Ellison made really valid points. Mr. Dryhouse wasn't even aware of it. Huge renters in Ludlow, huge long term, huge section eight, huge part of our community, huge part of our school system. If you took them out, there's a lot of children. So I feel like in ways we spent so much time on this. And I don't think we have on this.
Just something that having a public hearing
This is my last thought.
Gives them a chance to come and voice, you know, Frank, come to that meeting. Bruce can come to that meeting and voice their at the public hearing where if you if you don't do that, and you can get to it, and people may say, you know, it's really right, like, it's it's over, but we don't need it. But if you don't put it to, all it does is it's going to get, this is my, is it's going to get sidelined. And eventually it will come back up and we're just at another spot. So and you can get to the public hearing and say, you know what, people may say, yeah, this needs one word. And that's where
So if if we just go to a public hearing, I mean, we know who the big long term rental people are in town. Can is it a problem to send them?
I don't think so. I would just be, I am
Because a lot of people don't
We do.
Follow our posting on the boards and stuff.
I know. And I don't have a problem with it. My fear is that you miss something. And that's the problem. It's not against, I know, I I see Frank all the time. I see Bruce. Yes, that's fine. But the one person that rents their property that we don't know about, then you have a real problem on hands. Because we we may know, and I don't agree, I agree that, you know, there should be ways to do that notification, but I just, that's my fear. I have no problem doing it, but if that's what you want me to do. But my fear is that I miss something.
I understand, and that makes total sense.
It will be in the journal.
It's in the journal, and we do it by statute. And I understand, by statute is not the best way. And we put it on the website and the meetings, we talk about it. But I just, I would be nervous that that I miss something.
So, all right, so do we move this forward? How do you feel, Drew? And I'll adjust it to us.
I know. If it's just to move it forward, I guess I have to go with the board on that part, you know.
Let's move it forward, so it'll be the same.
Both of them.
So we both have a public hearing, and we will do that as a joint hearing with the select board. And no question.
Go ahead, Mr. Alden.
Sorry, last one. You don't have to answer this tonight. I'll ask it at the public meeting, but just as a heads up. I'm I'm curious to to know and to understand why members of the board, this board in particular, would be against ensuring that long term rentals are safe. That's really, that's really what this document is about. And I know there was a mention that that it's already you know, regulated by the state. Well, short term rentals are regulated by the state also. You know, and it was a comment that a gentleman said that he pays taxes and pays water. Well, well, let me doesn't sit down, does that. You know, that's that's no different. So the question I'll pose is, you know, you can think about is what what is the what is the real concern about ensuring that the long term rentals are are safe? You know, that's what I'll ask at the at the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. When is the public hearing?
We actually haven't set a date. It'll be 31 days from today or
It could be August 7th or 8th. The select board agrees. It could be August 7th or 8th.
Yeah, because we don't need to select board for another week.
Won't be 30 days. Select will soon be.
Yeah, I counted from the select
Yeah, I mean, from
Oh, wait a minute. I counted from the select board's meeting.
It's based on our chapter, February.
The next select board meeting would be August 4th.
But
But we have a meeting at the select board that need to discuss this on the 7th of July.
Right, and I counted 31 days, and it would be August 7th or 8th, because I need a date.
Yeah, so that would be a Friday or
Get into the journal and stuff.
Thursday or Friday, so, but then you're coming into the second Monday, which would be your DRB. But if you
But if you went for the second Tuesday, which would be the twelfth.
Does it have to be a Tuesday? Can it be on the, on the seventh?
Uh, the seventh is a Thursday.
Yeah, can it be on a Thursday?
Normally have meetings on Thursdays, don't they? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays?
I think that's safer because people aren't used to.
So what was the next Monday? That's DRB, so Tuesday or Wednesday of that next week?
That would be the twelfth would be the Tuesday or the thirteenth.
I'm gonna be in Maine.
Okay, so forget that.
I'm gonna be in Maine on the eighth. On the twelfth.
Wouldn't that be the normal DRB since you're not having DRB?
On the eleventh. Well, I mean, if you wanna bump us, we'd move our DRB hearing to the twenty fifth.
Right.
And you could commandeer the eleven of August.
I don't, I don't want to.
Yeah. Well, I think the boards are gonna be present. We're having a public hearing.
Yes.
It'd be nice to obviously have the planning chair there.
I don't have to be there.
But I don't think we should push it another week.
No, I think the twelfth and the thirteenth.
Twelfth and thirteenth.
Yeah.
And we'll see what the select board says.
Yeah, I think either day works for all.
I'll go down to spread tenders.
Um, I just wanted to say in closing on this, um, thank you for the hard work that you've done.
Thank you for the hard work you guys have done. How many times have you met on it? Like four times?
We go back and forth. Um, but this is how town government works.
Yeah, definitely.
With the, with the, you know, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good. When you propose food truck?
Here we go.
But you've already decided, you've already decided to move that to something.
Let's do it again.
Thank you.
That is going to a public hearing. That we said was going to.
Oh, but we should talk about, we're gonna change the, we're gonna get rid of the, um, two hundred feet thing? I think we have a consensus to get rid of that, am I assuming?
Yeah, I, you know, I've been thinking about this ordinance and I'm, I'm gonna speak, you know, obviously for myself. Two thousand eight is a very, very long time ago and I've said it in open meeting until, I guess I blew in the face. We owe it, uh, to update the food ordinance, vendor ordinance. Some of, I, I don't wanna regulate an entire sector of business out of town. I do wanna protect our brick and mortars, but I think the two hundred foot, I think, I, I think I wanna scrub that. It is not having an agenda.
And it's actually currently at three hundred feet in this document.
Yeah.
It's actually wrong.
It's E two, EA two.
Um.
Like I said, to have the footage, just to say no, we're not gonna rely on food trucks. It's one of the, it's one of the others. We not go through all the work.
Yeah.
We, we got, we wanna go through the work and then make it. Be able to.
And I think it shows that we listen to everybody. We listen to them and we listen to them.
And what I really want the, you know, the towns, the citizens to think about, and I guess for us to think about, is the permit issuance duration fees. That's, that's big, up to thirty days, two day permits, hundred dollars a day. Those are actionable items to try to digest and think about how that works in, um, considering the future.
I just wanna say about that, at our meeting at the, was it our meeting where the two food truck, the two, um, the eatery person came?
I wasn't there.
Okay, so she talked about having a food truck and she said their fees are astronomical everywhere they go for festivals and she didn't think that was a lot at all.
And you're basing this off of other towns. We're not reinventing.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
Verbal wheel here.
But, okay, so we're getting rid of EA two?
E. Yes.
Justin, I was kind of surprised you were okay with B on that one. Any hotel, bed and breakfast motel or inn measured from the nearest edge of the property?
Well, I wanted to scrub two.
Yeah, let's scrub that number two.
So that would include A, B.
Okay.
Um.
Scrub.
Yeah, I mean, you know, for my own personal business, it would be a special event permit that I would get though, it, when I would do food trucks in the past.
Right, so it would be a different permit.
Um, what else did I write? The ambiguity of section D where Callahan says is necessary.
Scrub.
Scrub it. I do like the noise orders lighting.
Except for noise odors and lighting.
Deemed offensive by the manager, which would then, the manager would only deem it, uh, offensive if he got complaints, right? That's how I would take that.
We don't want, no food truck operator should physically accost, restrain or otherwise interfere.
Yeah. Um, and then Eric made, Mr. Alden made a great point under application review section four. The character of the area will not be adversely affected. Uh, that is very subjective. And I think that kind of ties into what we just spoke about, um, with section D, the offensive practices.
It's interesting that Chris Callahan didn't have a problem with that, though.
Yeah, and it might just be how I'm reading it and maybe I'm wrong.
Are we scrubbing that then?
I'm sorry, where are you, Justin? My phone.
It's hard to follow. It's.
Yeah, I got the other ones.
Application review, section C.
Section C.
And then four, uh, second page.
Let's see.
Second Roman numeral two, C four.
Yes.
Okay, I get it, I get it, I get it.
So am I scrubbing that? The character area will not be adversely affected?
Hmm, that would be my, my suggestion, but it's up to the board.
Bob and Julie, what do you think?
I just not find it.
Me too. I just found it too. Let's go look at.
I'm trying to think of where that might actually be necessary.
Because you covered the traffic, which is big, you know, because like parking, you wanna make sure you don't and cringe on the parking that's already allotted to that place. So that one, maybe under character, that would be under traffic, right?
I mean, it's not like we're gonna be able to put a food truck in a residential area. Um, if it's in a commercial area, I don't, I don't see, um, how it's gonna adversely affect the area.
Okay, so we'll scrub it.
I'm okay with that. Scrubbing that part.
And I guess this is more for public meeting to dis, to discuss, uh, the number of food trucks, seasonality, all that kind of stuff.
Some people say Memorial Day to Labor Day on their food truck things.
It'd be nice to have food trucks in the winter here. I don't know how bombing in parking spots is gonna work, but, you know, in theory, we have eighteen thousand people coming out on a weekend. It'd be nice, it'd be nice to have that option. Okay.
Okay, I'm clear. We already have that public hearing scheduled.
Yes, indeed. I even misspoke on that. It's August fifth, five thirty P M.
Uh, okay. Next time, one outside me.
Yeah, that's right.
Pedestrian safety discussion.
Um, yes, pedestrian safety discussion. Jeannie, Justin and Jeannie started the planning commission talking about this because Jeannie has been adamant that there are no handicap spots that the town is in control of anywhere. I mean, there's like one at the bank, Summit Shaws, and I forget where else, but there's very few. So anyway, we started having a discussion about pedestrian safety concerns in the village. And these are some of the ideas that we came up with. Justin had some ideas for us and we discussed at the planning commission and came to a consensus on these ideas. That these, um, following improvements could be implemented without a public hearing and it could fall under routine municipal authority. Sidewalk enhancements and extensions, install and improve sidewalks along the pedestrian corridors. The planning commission is suggesting sidewalks between the stoplight and the bridge before Shaws and from Pleasant Street to the walking bridge, which wouldn't be extending it that much, but you're basically, you know, walking on the road from the end of Pleasant Street sidewalk to the walking bridge.
I just wanna say something really quick. I'm so sorry to interrupt you. The fact that the state made a walking bridge that walks directly into a, a traveled lane of traffic is absolutely unbelievable to me. I, I, I'm speechless that they did that, but anyway, go ahead and start.
Um, and establish a green space at the end of Mill Street by the river when the FEMA buyout happens. Um, prioritize, prioritize areas with high foot traffic and safety concerns with painted walk lines and crosswalks. I, since Justin brought this to our attention and we talked about it at the planning commission, at one of my regional meetings, uh, Logan presented this whole presentation on safe streets. And I, I came back to the planning commission with them at the next meeting and we added things, um, to this from that information. Um, so one of the things was the way that you draw the lines, they should be at least six inch, six inches and they should, at night, the headlights should be able to shine on them and they should be bold. Those are some of the things that safe state, safe streets were advocating. So our suggestion is to paint crossing lines with six inch wide lines that glow when headlights hit them at night. And stoplight timing and pedestrian signals, adjust light cycles to better protect pedestrians, including adding a dedicated pedestrian only phase. A walk light should try, stop traffic at every lane. You know, you go to walk and then the people from Depot Street pull around and like you almost get hit.
It's really bad. I know, you know that, Justin, but you're crossing the street and they, they poo toot you. They're like, get out of the way. To get across, I, I definitely, we have to do that. You can't get across Main Street.
Brendan, is it true that that stoplight isn't capable of doing that, that particular stoplight?
Probably not.
Well, guess what? That stoplight's getting replaced if I remember correctly.
Oh, good.
So we're hoping that we can, um, stopping and going on red encourages pedestrians in the walk lane. So if people turn on the walk light, it should stop traffic on all four lanes. And increasing the walk time at intersections, installing countdown timers or audible signals, signals when needed, or like, you know, the hearing impaired. So these are things, the thing that can't, that we've talked about that can't be done, um, without going to a public hearing, well, actually without doing a traffic study is reducing the speed limit from bridge to bridge. This, the trustees do have the authority to reduce the speed limit just from bridge to bridge. But I talked to Chief Orville and there has to be a traffic study and it's not a good time to do a traffic study because it's construction and people are driving slowly.
I do think, uh, our old traffic study from twenty twenty two, was it, when we did Veterans Park? I looked at that, uh, how fast they were going through there. Um, it's my understanding that traffic safeties factor in the average speed, but it also factors in entrances and exits on the main road. And there are quite a plenty, uh, bridge to bridge. And if you're going thirty miles an hour down through the stoplight here, somebody's pulling out of O'Shaw's, you are going to hit them. Um, thirty miles is just too fast in the village.
And you've seen your misses there for sure.
Yes, I've had my fair share of near misses. Um, so the impetus on that is entrances and exits, I think, instead of just overall, general.
Okay.
Lane traffic.
There is money available, grant money available through safe streets, but unfortunately, it's based on population growth, which we're not seeing a lot of in Ludlow. Your ability to get the grant, I mean. So our recommended next steps to plan and commission begin sidewalk and crosswalk and sidewalk and crosswalk improvements via public works, ADA compliant, of course. Coordinate with our traffic signal contractor to assess changes to pedestrian signals and schedule an engineering, traffic study for post-construction to support a formal speed limit reduction and continue community outreach to reinforce pedestrian safety awareness. So I do wanna point out that our, our, um, survey that we did of the village, those were some of the things that they wanted. They wanted more sidewalks, sidewalk improvement, more pedestrian friendly. Um, let's see, last evening at the planning commission, I'll go, we talked about at length was ways to add parking. Oh yeah, this is what we did this last week. Two possible areas to consider were diagonal spaces in front of the library and making one side a pleasant street between Depot Street and Elm Street. The parking side of the street with diagonal parking and ADA compliance spots. If that is impossible, we're gonna ask Cherry to work on an engineering grant to look at areas in the village to add parking. Those are just our ideas where they might be able to be added. Also wanna talk to Ron Tarble. We wanna invite him to one of our meetings with a map of the village and see his ideas on possible areas to increase parking opportunities.
Would you talk to me about that grant with the population growth? You said that one more time.
Oh, I, it, safer streets, if you adopt, like make the lines bigger, if you adopt, that was one of them. If you adopt the safer street guidelines in the village, it makes us, um, it makes us in line for some grants to make improvements in our pedestrian safety stuff, but it's based on a growing population. That gets most of the money. Towns that show that their population is growing.
In how many, how many years prior? Because we experienced population moving to twenty twenty.
Let me see what you said.
It's obviously probably leveled off at this point, but.
Adopting it makes us eligible for grants. One billion dollars exists for road safety projects focused on areas with higher birth rates and higher marriage rates. And the most single, the single vehicle crashes happen with lane departure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for reading on to it. I love to keep this conversation going. I think, um, it's an important one, especially with different events coming in and the changing, um, with the food trucks and the, um, farmer's market and all the different things, more bike friendly. All of a sudden, um, we have alternate load transport all the time. It's a good thing to think about, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say too that I think it's really encouraging because Shell is putting in the crosswalk all the way up. They agreed to it in the DRB to put that up and that's a big step. Because the crosswalk from the old dentist, Dr. Montgomery's, I don't know what you call it now, Dr. Montgomery's up to the Legion.
Oh, they're moving into the Legion.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I don't cross, I saw, saw, sidewalk, but they are putting the crosswalk in front of Shell going across the street to sort of where the Johnny's Kitchen and them are. They moved it up farther than you.
We can, as trustees, decide where our crosswalks and how many crosswalks we want in our village.
Now, they were told in the meeting, the Shell on testimony said that the state made them do a curb cut for that in front of the.
Because it's an existing crosswalk.
It isn't though. They moved it up farther. I don't know there were laws.
I was under the impression, and I'm fairly factually certain of this, that the trustees have the ability to change.
Yes, they have some jurisdiction.
They took out the two parking spots there on, in front of Shell to put the crosswalk in, not the Shell station, the state of Vermont.
Maybe the state of Vermont can make those recommendations, but I think we have autonomy on that. I would challenge that if we didn't agree with it, but so it's fine.
Okay, your end encumbrance funds. So we have two money at the skate park. Does not need to be encumbered because the skate park fund is a capital fund rather than a general budget, general fund line item. So we can skip that. We do, in speaking with Ron Tarble, we wanna encumber the village paving from this year. We didn't do any work, um, so we wanna roll over this forty two thousand dollars. So we wanna encumber that into this next fiscal year. So I'd ask that we encumber the forty two thousand from the village re-treatment fund to the next fiscal year and we would move forward with paving in the village where we can get a little bit more done for, a little more bang for our buckets, they say.
Now, I'm a fan of encumbering if you don't, um, spend the money on the project just due to target trends. What, why wouldn't, or why sort of we don't have money to encumber? You ever come across that?
I think there's, I, I haven't. We didn't do it. When I was in Cavendish, we didn't do it a whole lot because we didn't have money to encumber. Um, I think in some towns, they look at it like, okay, if you did, if you didn't use it, you know.
You lost.
You lost. Um, that's kind of a, a little bit of an old, like, small way of thinking. But this is a situation where, you know, forty two thousand dollars in the paving world, you're not gonna get you all that far.
Gets you a really nice driveway.
You start looking at.
Eighty four might help.
Eighty four. So you get, um, a little bit better off, so.
I would make a motion, you would need a motion for this encumbering. I would make a motion to, uh, encumber the village paving re-treatment fund in the amount of forty two thousand dollars for year twenty twenty six.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fire department, five K review and possible approval. So this is the five K, the five O R, five K, um, that the fire department has been putting on. I believe this will be the third year. Um, goes from the community center through town, up High Street, down Doug Road. back on one-oh-three. I'm guessing this year that it might go over that footbridge, but I'm not sure, because it used to do a little jive where you, because when, there was no way to get there, so it would go, came here, took a left down Depot, went Pleasant Street, then went up, but Elm, by the Elm Center, and then back down, and then circle down Mill Street. I'm guessing it's gonna go down and go over that bridge, if I had a guess.
Well, make sure it comes up.
Yeah, right, traffic. But fantastic event, it's been a very good thing the last two years. I'm running it, I'm running it, yep.
Right. I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah. I might win it this year.
Going for the W?
I tried to tell, I tried to tell Chief Billings last year that I wouldn't sign if retirement, if he didn't pick me up at Catholic church.
Okay, that's. Oh, what are you gonna use this time?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I might have some sweat with more of both of these now. Okay, we're skipping thirteen. Other business?
I just wondered if there was any update on the dedication of the bridge that's horribly unsafe for everybody.
Yes.
Because Mr. says we're gonna get a plaque for it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, nobody can object, Justin, so hurry. I'm on your side, Justin. Try walking there at night, there's no light either. Not only is there no place to go, there's no light.
It's right on Pleasant Street Extension.
On Mill Street.
Oh, yeah.
And it's black, it's black, we're down there.
Yeah.
You can't see nothing.
They pretty much just built the bridge and like, I walk, there you go.
Yeah, we don't know what to do with that corner.
Okay.
Yeah, we can buy it.
You were talking about the little buttman on the road?
Yeah.
Corner of the corner.
You should go through the sidewalk, so we can at least get.
It's that one house over there.
Some of them we're gonna have to look at.
Yeah, uh, I have one thing for you under other business, and it's one of those just weird ones that I bring up every few months, and it's the concrete block in Dover and Pleasant. It is such an eyesore.
It's on the top of my hit list now.
Okay, it's such low, it's been low for, for a while, so, okay.
Right now, there's one sidewalk there, so.
Don't pour it in.
Yeah. Do you have any updates? I do, I have a few. Started, you know, I know most people are aware, but it is, you know, Rose Gollings retired on, her last day was Friday. So I just wanted to publicly thank Rose for the twenty-seven years of service that she's put into this town. Lot of blood, sweat, and tears has gone into that planning department from, from Rose. So we are, I am, I am happy and I wish Rose well in her retirement. I wish that I worked with her longer, is what I told her, so. But I am very happy for her, so, you know, if you see her, you know, wish her well, hopefully she's enjoying. I said, you know, I've said to a lot of people that it's, when you work in a, in a, especially in a municipality or a job for twenty-seven years, it's an identity, um, and that becomes very tough. So, um, a credit to Rose for all she's done, and, you know, we will have a formal send-off to Rose sometime in August.
That's wonderful, well, well-earned.
Yes.
Yes.
Fireworks are gonna be held on Okemo on the fifth. Usually go down, go off around sundown, but they'll have some food vendors up there, some music. And that should be good. We already talked about tomorrow, Senator Peter Walsh will be visiting the wastewater facility at eleven, just to talk about some of the proposals he has for some bills regarding future disaster funding. Because of what it is, I'm gonna be going up to Killen Inn at nine-thirty to hear him speak for a little while. I already touched on the billing issue we have at the wastewater. You all have seen the merger timeline update, um, which is pretty much moving forward. We're just hanging into that legal side of things to meet the deadlines regarding public notice, so that is moving. And as I mentioned before, is there a day next week we can meet, we can do it in the morning, even eight A.M. to set the tax rate?
Yes, I, yeah.
On a day Tuesday.
I have a suggestion, can we get these calendars?
You're right, it's April.
I'm sorry.
I didn't even notice it till you were looking before.
This week? Or next week?
Next week.
Oh, 'cause we have.
I don't have my calendar. I write it on the wall. I mean, I.
We can do, uh, Tuesday.
Does Tuesday at eight o'clock work?
I'm writing it down right now.
Tuesday, July eighth?
We have Tuesday, July eighth.
July eighth.
I'll double check. Okay.
I will too, for sure.
And I'll have Tori.
Eight-thirty or eight?
Eight A.M.
Let's do eight A.M. And I'll have Tori warn that now, just like a day for short enough.
Attended one meeting, we left with three.
Yes, that's, that's the way it goes, so, and that's all I got.
Good, thank you.
I'll message you immediately if I can't do it, Brendan, I don't know, my husband has that weird schedule there.
Yep.
But thank you very much.
Same as you. All right, date for the next meeting, August fifth?
Have to get that.
We've all signed warrant orders?
Yep.
Do we need an executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.